We don't have a committee of the whole to order. And good evening, everybody. Our first order of business will be an overview of the CIP. And I'm assuming that Jamin can do that for us?
Yeah, so we'll start with the CIP budget overview tonight. We'll move on to the executive budget summary, and then we have a couple of general and other funds that we're going to go through from an operating standpoint. So, little background on the actual CIP itself. We had met a couple of times, I believe in July and August. Weeded out a few items, but there was still a lot up in the air, especially with the Whitewater Park and things like that, so we decided to bring it back to committee of the whole and run it through. Just to give you guys an idea of what the impact was. In the information I sent you, there was that budget cover letter. I hope that helps. And I'm hearing there was a lot of numbers in there, but don't worry, we'll walk through them. I just tried to anticipate any questions you folks may have to help you make some better decisions. But the first thing we're going to go through is the document called CIP by funding source. And that's this one, a little hard to see up there. But this basically just breaks down all of the items that went into the CIP for 2019 through 2023, and it breaks down what the actual funding sources are themselves. Any specific questions on this? This is kind of tackled in a later attachment in terms of where the borrowing actually comes into play. So, any specific questions on this document? The next one we'll be talking about is basically the 2019 CIP budget support. Now, what this is, that table up top basically mirrors that CIP funding by, or funding by source document. And you can see I put a couple of notes there. Anything with an asterisk next to it was initially set to be funded through debt, okay? If we go down to that middle table there, you can see where the borrowing actually comes into play and how much we actually need to borrow. So, if we look at calendar year 2019, the sum of those items marked with an asterisk is $7,759,000. The borrowing actually breaks down to about $7,392,000, and that's because we're able to break out a couple of other funding sources in terms of special assessments, pieces that were part of the library budget, and then the historical transfers that the general fund makes to the capital outlay fund, and of course, the fire township contributions as well. Yes?
Could you magnify that a little larger?
A little better?
Much better, thank you, sir.
You can go 125 and make that bit kind of... Okay, so, and the table I was just talking about here is right here. So, the 7.4 million is what we're looking at for borrowing in 2019. And then you see 20, 21, 22, and 23 go across. Now, the further out you get, the less accurate these numbers get. You can see I was able to put a couple of numbers in in terms of alternate sources of funding. You see 5,000 that was scheduled for the library fund, $150,000 general fund to the capital outlay. The special assessment amounts that funding will be determined in future years, as well as the fire township contribution. Those are kind of items that the special assessment is dependent on the funding within that actual fund, and then the fire township contribution is recalculated every single year, okay? So, worst-case scenario for calendar years 20 through 23 is that top number, that 5.9 million in the case of 2020, 6.2 million in the case of 21, and so on and so forth. That number will decrease because we'll be able to fill in kind of those blanks in terms of alternative sources of funding. We just don't know what they are right now. As of right now, we know that, we know what the 2019 amounts are. So, if we're looking at what's in the CIP budget for 2019, it's the 7.4 million, yes?
Okay, so, the fire township contribution is a revenue, then?
It is, yes.
Okay. Now, for the capital outlay fund, can we borrow for that at all rather than transfer from general fund?
We can.
Okay.
Historically, and you can see I have a note down here, and this isn't guaranteed, this 50,000 left is contingency. I put it in to be conservative for right now. We do actually transfer $200,000 from general fund to the capital outlay fund every single year. Historically, that has been the amount. We don't have to do it. We can free that money up for operating purposes and continue to borrow the entire amount for the capital outlay fund.
Okay.
Yes.
People on the council, can you just explain what capital outlay fund is, where that money's coming from, what it actually means, and, you know, some of these other things?
So, we have, we have two types of construction funds. One is actually called construction fund, Fund 400. Fund 410 is the capital outlay fund. Now, Fund 400, we leave for kind of the bigger projects that will kind of carry over from year to year. So, like, the streets projects, we know there's always going to be costs rolling over from the prior year in terms of wrapping up the projects and everything like that. They're just kind of bigger projects that we want to keep an eye on in a separate fund. Capital outlay is everything else that people ask for. So, could be equipment purchases, could be base studies that they need to do, basically anything that doesn't fall in the realm of the operating budget would get thrown into the capital outlay fund because the operating dollars aren't there, so we need to borrow for them. So, it's just kind of two separate funds set aside.
And that money comes from?
Borrowing.
So, the capital outlay fund is actually borrowing money as well?
Right, and that's, so if we go up to the top table, the 1, 2, 3, 4 line items with the asterisks next to them, those are the amounts that really roll into the borrowing amounts, okay? Yes?
Does 2019 represent the highest borrowing that we've had in the city, or?
No. 2018, I believe, was, I think it was around 9 million or so, something like that. Let me look here. So, we did a refinancing. In 18, we took out a total of $13.4 million. Now, I think 4.4 of that was a refinancing, so you could back that up. But again, you're back down to that $9 million number. That may in fact be the largest borrowing in the history of the city. I'm not entirely sure.
That included public works facility?
Yes, yeah.
That was why it was?
Yep. And 17 was a very big year as well because they borrowed for the 17 and 18 projects all in one fell swoop for 2017. So, we've had a couple of big years, and a couple of big years ahead of us.
Jamin, just to clarify, with the capital outlay fund, you said it's 150,000, but you said that's borrowing money too, so why isn't it up in the red?
It's, it's not all borrowing. It's, the asterisk is kind of that placeholder of, all right, here's our beginning borrowing number, and then I back out kind of the alternative funding sources. I shouldn't say the asterisk numbers represent total borrowing. They represent numbers in the CIP that don't have alternative sources of revenue. So, like, the building maintenance has its own fund. It's a separate special revenue fund within the city. Equipment replacement has its own separate fund. It's funded through the general fund. Money is given to it. If we look at stormwater fund, it's funded by rates. So, it's, we, we kind of look at the items that don't have their own specific sources of revenue, and that's kind of where you start with the borrowing number, and then you back out those alternative funding sources, which in this case, in 2019, we're pulling some money from the special assessment fund to reduce some of the borrowing. The general fund transfer over would reduce some of the borrowing, and then the fire township contribution would reduce that.
Just one follow-up to my question, and that is, are we well within our limits of the ability to borrow 7, something, million dollars?
Well, okay, we'll, we'll skip forward here, and we'll talk about that right away and just get that out of the way. Sorry, Pat, I got to shrink this on you. Okay, so, we'll get into this too after we run through some of this stuff. So, assuming the Whitewater Park grants, that's the very left column there. That's kind of assuming everything as is, assuming the changes I sent out today, and this is assuming that the grants actually come to fruition and we move forward with the project, okay? So, if we look at where we would be at 1231-18, that's the first block of numbers there. We're at about $34.6 million in outstanding debt. The 2019 borrowing, the 7.5 million. Now, you'll notice that doesn't 100% match to the first page of this document because I built in debt issuance costs, things like that. So, we always have to borrow a little bit more than we actually really need because we have to pay to borrow. 2019 scheduled principal payments of 3.6 million. That gets you down to 1231-19, estimated balance of 38.5 million. Remaining to 4% is 8 million, and then remaining to the state required 5% is 19.7 million. So, yes, there is room. Yes?
Thank you, Jamin. When you say pay to borrow, do you mean you're incorporating within that the ultimate cost of paying off the interest as well, or just costs for the process?
Well, this is just principal, but along with that is debt issuance costs. I factored in a discount on all of these issues. I didn't factor in a premium. We could get lucky, we may get a premium and have to borrow less. We just don't know. I kind of went the conservative route and estimated a discount on these as well.
Thank you.
And if interest rates skyrocket, that's, that would be a problem?
That's, that's the question. Joe Murray did put together the initial analysis. We've had a lot of changes since he put together the analysis for us. So, I basically used his numbers and just prorated out the changes that happened within our CIP. So, we hopefully have a decent outlook on what he thought the interest rates would do. And Joe Murray from Spring said, sorry, I don't know if I said that. He would have a better outlook on the interest rates than I obviously would. So, it's a much better picture than I would be able to do on my own.
Thank you. And the interest rates, I assume once we borrow, those are fixed, right? It's just the concern over what interest rate happens to them going forward with respect to additional borrowing?
They are, and it depends on the borrowings themselves. And if they're callable, we would have the opportunity to refinance, but that's after a certain number of years.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. We'll just head back up to this one, blow it up a little bit. Okay. Do we have any other specific questions on this schedule itself? And this just kind of, again, the key line we want to focus on is, whoa, how did that happen? Oh, that's all right. I guess the key line we want to focus on is this one, the borrowing amount. Any specific questions on this? I didn't know you could change PDFs like that.
Why does it bump up 20 to 21, from 5.9 to 6.2?
That just depends on the projects that are scheduled.
I think that's when the fire truck comes in for like a million dollars?
Well, let's go down to... I'm going to have to reopen this one because it's being goofy. So, here I tried to key in, and this is why you folks had a lot of numbers, because I tried to figure out what kind of questions you would ask. So, if we look at 2020, here's kind of the big-ticket items. We broke down streets, stormwater, preventative maintenance. RDA does have some borrowing across the board in some of these. Separate source of income, because those are in the TIF districts, but I threw them in there to tie out with the actual CIP itself. I basically grabbed anything over $100,000 if I could. So, in 2020, you can see the big-ticket items would be the RDA borrowing, streets, and then a $1.7 million parking garage at the police department. 2021, we start seeing, the street stays pretty consistent, a lot of work to do out there. But then in 2021, we start seeing the big Whitewater Park-related borrowings that I threw in there. Yes?
I see that the Glacier Marine went up. Is this?
It did, because we had not factored in electric infrastructure and street lighting. So, we had to get that in there. And we compromised on that. We met the other day on that. They're just going to go a portion of the way, and then depending on how the property actually gets developed, we would shoot to have the actual developers pay for that. If that falls through, hopefully there's enough increment there just to pay for the rest of the electric infrastructure that needs to go in. Okay? Any questions on the major projects that we've got going on? This was just kind of to help you look at it and see if there's anything you thought maybe we needed to drop off. We've been through that a couple of times with leadership at the, at the CIP meetings. They applied their cases, we've gone through this, and this is kind of what we whittled it down to in terms of the large projects.
I guess because Park and Rec didn't have their meeting earlier this week with the change in the Whitewater Park and CIP, I was curious how it was decided what was going to be put in there now?
Dan and I met this morning and walked through it. He had a good idea of what the 19 costs were going to look like, and that Whitewater Park-related line doesn't show all of the Whitewater Park. I just kind of grabbed the big-ticket items.
No, but I'm looking at the other, what you had for by department, where you only have like, you know, $88,000 in there now. And I think our latest Phase 2 budget that he got was over 90-something, plus 15 for another concept plant, so it was like 110, so I'm curious where...
Which document are we looking at, Regina?
On the CIP by department?
Okay.
I know, that's why, it just triggered when you just had... When Dan showed me the, the latest kind of, I guess, not proposal, but, you know, estimated cost for this year to get in line with the grant money.
I think originally there was, so there, there's two items we moved over. You can see we moved the $15,000, looks like soil sediment testing. And if we're just looking at the general obligation debt side of it, we moved that into 2020, that was originally in 19. And I believe in 2019, there was two line items. One was a general obligation, one was grant. I think they were out $95,000 apiece, something like that.
Right.
We'll let Dan come up with it.
Oh, there he is, I didn't even see that you were here.
So, I had Gary Lacy send us a new proposal after our meeting with the DNR, and this just included everything the DNR wanted. And this would be including like the Phase 1 and the Phase 2. So, this would be the engineering to apply for the Phase 1 portion of the Whitewater Park next year, and it'd be all the engineering they want. So, it includes a hydraulic analysis, the H&amp;H study, and...
Okay, but if that's the case, when we go to the, say we get the grant next year, are we putting in enough money to match?
For the, we wouldn't, we wouldn't do any construction next year, so we...
No, not in 2019, but if we get, put in the grant for next year, next May, and we get it, and it would start in 2019 or '20, do we have enough in there for 2020 to actually match the grant?
The 2020 numbers, I just, I don't know yet because I don't know what the cost estimates are for the Phase 1.
It doesn't look like it, but we can correct that, you can correct that next year.
I know, but I'm just wondering if we're a little shy into that.
Jamin and I talked about that. We just, we just don't know what it is going to be right now.
Thank you.
As long as you're up here, if you could address, is this going to be a money-making deal? Are we going to be collecting fees for the Whitewater Park eventually?
So, you, you can't charge to use the Whitewater Park. So, the way the revenue is recaptured in other places, that you do like a rental operation or you contract it out to a business that do it for you. So, you know, and I know in Ann Arbor, Michigan, they make a lot of money. So, right, right now, we're, I'm doing research to see what, you know...
How, how do people charge again for?
Through rentals.
Or the other things that go down the river?
Any other? That's it, then, really?
With the increased traffic to the city, presumably, hopefully, right?
Dan, I mean, if you want, Dan can send it to you or send everybody here that, yeah, the UW professor do a whole economic impact study for the Whitewater Park, and it's going to bring you...
They're actually in your mailboxes in the city hall if you want to pick it up.
And why can't you charge for Whitewater?
It's, water's of the state, so you can't...
It's a public waterway.
It's a public waterway, yeah.
Thanks, Jamin and Dan.
And that was, those were the last-minute changes I sent out this afternoon with the revised packet because the dollar amounts didn't shift significantly. They, they went down a little bit. Things just got pushed out a year is basically what happened. And 19, we're really focused on getting the work done that the DNR wants to see get done, okay? So, this one, I just threw in just to give you a high-level analysis of where we would fall for the building maintenance and equipment replacement funds. These are two separate funds set aside as special revenue funds to the city. You can see this just represents the 2019 amounts that are going to be spent out of those funds for building maintenance and equipment replacement. And I just wanted to show you guys kind of where I forecasted these out to be for the next couple of years. You can see this section is the building maintenance fund. Pretty healthy, healthy balance in there, I guess. Denise, we'll go with Denise first. Okay, yes?
Yeah, okay, so my question was, first of all, where does the money come from for the forecasted revenue for building and for the equipment?
So, for the building, that's rental.
Okay, and so, if we wanted to, we could actually leave some of that money in the general fund, could we not?
That, I can't answer off the top of my head because I don't know if there's any specific policies written in terms of how that rental income is used. Just historically, it has gone into the building maintenance fund.
Because when you take a look, there is an awful lot of money after, you know, three years. And so, I would actually like you to explore that and find out if in fact, we can leave some of that $150,000 in the general fund.
We have that option, or we could just get more aggressive in how we use it as well.
Or we can just what?
Get more aggressive in how we actually use those funds as well.
Well, I would, I would like to see, I would like to see us have a little bit more in the general fund.
Okay. I will look at that. Then you can see the equipment replacement fund, the forecasted revenue in that.
I had a question before you move on. When you went out to all the building and maintenance, did you include our new building with McFarland State Bank? And how is that going to be put in there?
There was nothing requested in the building maintenance for the McFarland State Bank. We don't know what those costs are going to be. I think in the near term, in terms of what we need to do for the McFarland State Bank, they're going to be larger-type expenses that we may have to borrow for. We could, we could look into using the building maintenance fund for some of the remodeling and things like that.
Okay, I just wanted to...
And that hasn't been factored in yet.
We didn't forget about something that we're about to acquire.
Yep, I think we have $100,000 built into the 2019 borrowing for the work that would need to be done there in terms of the studies and everything else. But we know that's probably not going to cover all of it, so we would, the other costs that come through, we would probably start pulling from this building maintenance fund.
Okay, I had a question about that because I didn't, I didn't see that in this CIP. I know when we went through it back this summer, we had $100,000 in there for the McFarland Bank building. But in this version, I didn't see it, so I don't know where it got put.
It's right here. I know it's kind of hard to see, we'll make it a little bigger here. McFarland State Bank, $100,000.
Oh, it's in streets?
Well, it's built into 400 capital projects, yeah. And this is, this has been the struggle with the 410 and the 400 funds. I think we're going to explore just getting, possibly getting rid of the capital outlay fund altogether and just having one kind of, we'll call it a borrowing-type fund. Because it gets a little, because it's 400, even though it says it's in the 400 fund, it's a capital project, we're not actually putting it there. When we track it, it's going to go in the capital outlay fund.
Okay.
So, that's, okay, that's where we couldn't find it?
Yeah, yeah, it's a struggle. The struggle is real.
I went into buildings, I'm like, ah!
Yeah, yeah, it's a challenge.
I think you're going to find next year that some of these things like this will be changed, but in the sake of time and transition, we didn't want to complicate matters any more than they already were.
But Jamin knows where it is.
He's all over it.
Okay.
Just one more thing because it's on the screen, the sidewalk program. That includes, that's the sidewalks that we're anticipating that the city's going to be responsible for, our portion of whatever.
Yep.
And did you address at all retaining wall issues in this thing?
No, Brad?
I don't think there were any.
We had one specific thing we did this last year, which was to authorize some money for retaining all for an individual...
This is actually separate from that. So, the sidewalk program is actually a new program that's being brought back to the city to take care of different sidewalks that were, you know, not within ADA compliance in different segments of the city. So, it has nothing to do with the actual road construction projects. This is a separate program.
Okay.
It's actually administered through planning, so Rodney.
Okay, so, any questions on this section? You can see equipment replacement fund. We're pretty aggressive in the next couple of years of funding here. We start seeing that balance dwindle down, so it's something we may need to address. We'll kind of see how the 22 and 23 budgets shake out in terms of requests out of this, this particular fund. But for now, we're good. We can cover a lot of expenditures out of it for the next few years. So, any questions on this one? Okay. So, this one, I, I'm not going to go through every single number in here. I know it gets a little confusing after a while. But basically, I tried to anticipate what you folks wanted to see in terms of what would really happen with this Whitewater Park in case the grants didn't go through, or in case we just decide to abandon the project altogether, okay? So, what I did is I took, I took a look at all existing debt, all of our proposed debt, and tried to build out a schedule in terms of what I think the tax rates, how it's going to impact the tax rates. So, you can see this top schedule here, this relates to debt service for all new debt issued in 2019, '20, and '21. And I just kind of broke down the overall cost of this debt per $100,000 of equalized value. It's just a gauge, doesn't mean all that much. It's just a gauge to kind of see how much it really costs. Now, this isn't the true cost because we continue to see debt drop off as the years go on as well. This is just the overall cost of these borrowings over the life of them, this first section here, okay? That includes all debt, includes TIF-related debt as well. This next section, again, this, this is assuming we get all the grants that we think we're going to get for the Whitewater Park, okay? This next section is just assuming that TIF-related debt will be funded through the individual TIF districts. And I tried to kind of break down what the actual cost per equalized value would be if all of the TIF districts can pay for their own debt, and, and the general fund is just covering the other side of the debt, okay? And this kind of shows the impact or the cost of that debt over the life of them, okay? Yep.
Okay, so, what I see for the tax impact per $100,000 is that there seems to be a pretty sharp spike. And I'm just wondering if there's some way we can level that out a little bit more so that it's not quite so dramatic?
We can. I don't know if it's, the hard question right now is, the thing that's up in the air right now is that Whitewater Park, and, and I guess that's the decision to me. Are we going to go forward with it regardless of the grants? But then you also have the other issues, is what if the DNR comes back and just says, no, you just can't do it, we're not going to let you do it? And I, I don't know if we have that answer yet, do we? It certainly is something Ryan and I have been talking about, and something we want to look into. I just, I'm not sure what the answer is right now.
Okay, and then I guess my other question is, is that you're, you're, I think you're making maybe an unrealistic assumption about the, the TIF districts because, you know, we have three TIF districts that are in the red, and we have three TIF districts that are in the black. And, you know, the third TIF is going to be coming offline within a couple of years. So, essentially, we will just have then four and seven that's actually in the black. So, you know...
I agree, I, I know, and that's, I didn't know where to cut the analysis off at, you know? It's, and that would be a complete assumption in terms of how TIF 6 and TIF 5 and what the TIF 8 restructure, restructure is going to do. I think we're going to know a lot more next year. It's just this year, there's a lot up in the air right now that we just don't know. But you're, you're absolutely right in that case. So, I, I just had to assume that the TIF districts can do it. Now, again, this is, we're looking at this from like kind of a best-case scenario, I guess. And if you can live with that, I get, you know, we'll, we'll see what happens, but... Overall, on the next page of this, now again, this is the forecasted city tax rate impact. Again, assuming all TIF-related debt will be funded through individual, individual TIF districts. So, again, assuming all the, the grants come to fruition for the Whitewater Park. You can see my assumptions here at the bottom. So, I assumed a 1.5% annual increase in equalized value. Just for reference, 2018, which is the amount we're going to be using to tax in '19, actually grew 8.9%. So, this is, it's a pretty conservative approach to say we're going to grow 1.5%, but I didn't want to get too aggressive on it. Because we do, if you look at the history of Stoughton, we kind of went up, and then we went back down for a few years, and now we're kind of back on that uptick. So, it's, I didn't want to get too aggressive on that. So, again, I, I think realistically, we're going to have more growth than that to spread this over. The question that can't be answered right now is what is that going to be? And then I assumed a 1% annual increase in net new construction. 2018 was 1.59%. And then just to make it more realistic for the years 2022 through 2031, I just assumed $3 million in borrowing just to kind of really see what the whole picture would actually look like. And you can see what the rates do here in this column. You know, in 2018, we were at 834. We do drop down a little bit in '19. And then we start seeing that uptick with the, with the new borrowings. And then, you know, in 2027, 2028, we start seeing a lot of the big borrowings from '17 and '18 drop off. So, you start seeing that tax rate start going down again, okay? So, again, this is just an estimate of what these actual rates would do if all of these projects do happen. So, the next one is, this is assuming no Whitewater Park grant funding and excluding TIF debt. Basically, where the column we want to look at here is this is going to be the total cost of debt that the general fund would have to, have to cover in terms of $100,000 of equalized value. And you can see that start creeping up as the years go on. And then as the 2017 and '18 big debt issues drop off, we start seeing them drop, the, the rate go down again in '27, '28, '29. Overall, here's the impact... Overall, here's the impact. And a later slide shows these all side by side, so you don't have to go back and forth. But again, you can see it's kind of just the same scenario. We just increased the rate to cover the costs that, that weren't covered through the grants, okay? And the assumptions are all the same here, outside of the fact that we're assuming no grants for the Whitewater Park. This section here is just assuming no Whitewater Park. We, we are either told we can't do it or we, we choose to not move forward with it. Same analysis, total cost of the debt in this column per a hundred thousand dollars of equalized value. And then the overall tax rate, you can see these, these are a little bit lower than, than the previous two examples. Here's the slide I was talking about where we show the numbers side by side. And you can see I just put them lowest to highest. So no Whitewater Park, including DNR grants, and then including the DNR grants. That difference here is basically the difference between excluding the DNR grants and including them and what the actual cost change would be, okay? Yes?
Yeah, I would recommend to people that you go and you figure out your taxes based on that because that's what I did today. I went and I looked at, you know, no Whitewater Park and, and then if we got the grant, how much my taxes would actually go up in 2022? They'd go up fifty dollars just for the Whitewater Park. And then if we didn't get the grant, it was seventy-two dollars. So I think that we need to, to take a, a long, hard look at that along with the economic impact study because we need to understand how much of the economic impact, the positive, is actually going to be accrued by the city. Because if we don't accrue a decent amount of money, we're not going to be able to mitigate some of these increases. So I think this is something we're going to have to take a long, hard look at.
Yes.
That's nice, but we can't take a hard, long look at it tonight or during this process because we have to go through 2019 to figure out if we actually will be able to, you know, get the information we need to understand where the DNR sits. And so if we base our decision on just what's happening today, that's cheating our constituents of the future when we know the majority of people that we've talked to are excited about this, so.
I, I'm not asking you to make that decision today. I'm just pointing out something that I think that would be a good exercise and the fact that we all need to really study that economic impact study that was given to us. Because I think that all of those things come into play as we make these decisions, not just tonight, but into the future. You know, because I, I looked at it and I was like, whoa, okay. This is, uh, this is going to cost me, the taxpayer, my, you know, my tax bill is going to be going up for something. And I was, so, you know, I, I wanted to point it out to people because I think people need to, to think about it and figure, figure it out and, you know, you know, Sid's home is going to be different than mine, so, you know.
Yeah, and I don't want to get too far ahead on this, on, on the Whitewater Park specifically. I think the, the real question that the committee, the whole, and the council ultimately have to answer is how much do you feel comfortable spending in 2019? Once we get to that point, then we can see how things shake out. The problem with this analysis again is it's, it's looking at an equalized value, which actually isn't how you're taxed, you're taxed on your assessed value. The problem is we don't have that number yet for 2018. It's, we're, we're scheduled to get it on the 26th, so. So that changes things too. I think once we get that number, I can maybe do a little bit more of a, more accurate forecast in terms of what the rates will actually truly look like. But just for right now, I didn't have that number. It's just a guess at this point, I didn't want to do that. I, I think, like I said, the question that needs to be answered is how much are you comfortable spending in 19 to move forward with this and see if we can make it happen? Once we get through that, then we'll revisit this and look at the costs again. So again, the, the 2020 through 2023 budget is, it's not static. It's not that it can't move. We can tweak it and adjust it and change it next year, so. So here is the other analysis. We kind of went through this, I did this through 12, 31, 21 in terms of where we would be per our four percent policy, internal four percent policy, and then our external five percent policy. I'll make this a little bigger and slide it over. So you can see we went through, through 2019, we'd end up at a 3.31% debt burden. This is based on equalized value. That leaves eight million dollars to borrow to get to the four percent. And then we get down to 2020, we're at 3.47. We have 6.1 remaining to get to the four percent. And then 2021, which is the big borrowing year out of all of these, we're up to 3.7. That leaves 3.5 to get to the four percent now. Again, I didn't do this analysis any further, but debt will continue to drop off, so. But we're getting pretty close there. You can see, again, this is also using a 2018 equalized value. This number's going to grow, we just don't know what it is. So again, this is kind of worst case scenario in terms of how we're calculating it as well. This number will grow. Like I said, in 2018, it grew nine percent, so hopefully we keep seeing that. But just to paint a picture of kind of what we've been doing over the last few years, so from 2008 to 2016, we borrowed 26.7 million. 2017 was 7.7, 2018 was 13.4. Now again, that includes the refinancing that I did not include in this number. I just put it in there. And then the next three years, 19 through 21, we're at 19.9. So you can see over, you know, eight, nine years here, we're at 26.7 and then we're looking at a window of four to five years and this is where we're at. So, you know, it's, it's a lot of borrowing over the next few years, but there's a lot of big things going on as well, so, yeah.
Do you recall what our debt limit was before we changed it? I don't even know if you were present. Was it two and a half or three?
It was pretty low, it was pretty low.
Yeah, at one point, I think it was 2.2 and then there was a recommendation to raise it to the five. And at finance, we asked the question, you know, how much do you need to cover our debt? And they said, well, it's going to be around a 3.7 is what we were projecting. So we said, well, let's raise the policy to four. I think that's where we've settled on. And there was like two or three different requests to raise it to five, but the finance committee and the council kind of held firm at four, as I recall.
Which I think is smart. I mean, the state limit is five. It's not that you can't go over that. I mean, it, it, there'll be a bit of a punishment. I don't know exactly what that is. I don't think it's fines or anything like that, but you will.
Let's not find out.
You'll be monitored. I, I know there's municipalities that have exceeded it or are very close, but I'd rather keep that four percent ceiling internally and monitor it and, you know.
It's not unusual right now for municipalities for the, that debt number to, to go up. A lot of communities have had to borrow more money in the last several years.
Yeah, and this is, there, and there's a lot of really big ticket items on here that we're assuming are not going to continue into 22 and 23 and 24. I mean, we're looking at, you know, the Public Works Building, which was badly needed, the Whitewater Park, which I know people are very excited about and it's kind of a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. You know, the police parking garage is in there. So there's, there's a lot of just big ticket items in there that we have to assume won't continue into future years. Can't answer that for sure, but, you know, something to keep in mind.
Well, there's a big commitment to road projects. I mean, and all you have to do is look at our roads and see what kind of condition they're in. So there's some pretty ambitious plans, not only for replacing them but for maintaining them, which is something that will ultimately save us money because we'll get longer life out of our roads by having a preventive maintenance program.
And the, the new road, the Glacier Road, that's going to bring in new businesses, so. These are all like borrowing for our future, for our community, so.
Yeah, that's one I forgot about, that's a big one, 2, 2.6 million. So it's, you know, we're, we're locked into that one, so it's got to happen.
Yeah, I, I did an analysis like 15 years ago of, you know, if you put the money into prevention, what it did down, down the road. And it was, it was like, you know, for every dollar that you put into prevention, you saved four dollars down the road. So I mean, it's really a no-brainer, you know, to have that money in prevention.
And in 2022, we get a really nice new, new Main Street for really, you know, cents on the dollar. I mean, I, I think it's like a hundred thousand dollars out of pocket for the city in total. And the state's going to cover the rest, so. City doesn't need to know that, they can, you know, so. Just to wrap this up, this is assuming no Whitewater Park grants. You can see it's, let's see if we can show this a little bit more side to side so you can see the difference, but. So 19 doesn't change because we don't see any of those costs coming in yet. This reflects all borrowings up through 18. 19, you see it tick up a little, or 20, you see it tick up a little bit. And then 2021 is where we're at the 3.89% compared to the 3.7. Again, this information doesn't change outside of the total borrowings for 19 through 21. But again, this is worst case scenario because this 1.163 million is used throughout the entire analysis. That's going to go up. You have to assume that with the growth that's going on in Stoughton, so. So that is what I put together for the CIP budget presentation. Now, like we talked about, I, I think we need to look at 19 and make sure we're comfortable with that and agree to, to pass the budget as it is. Knowing that there's some questions that need to be answered in 19 going into 20 in terms of what we want to do with certain projects. But I think in terms of the overall budget that we need to approve, and we don't have to approve it tonight, it's just something for you folks to consider as we go through, we want this wrapped up by November 1st at that meeting. I think the question you need to ask yourself is are you comfortable with this 7.4 million dollars right now in terms of the borrowings that we need to do? And again, they're all projects that we weeded out in the first couple of CIP meetings. You look at, at all of that 7.4 million, there's 2.6 million, 2.8 million for streets that badly need it. Stormwater is all funded through rates, that's actually not part of the debt, so we don't have to worry about that. And then the other items kind of start dropping off a little bit. Again, this is TIF-related debt, this 500, so there's not much we can drop out of here that's going to make a huge difference in 2019.
Okay.
Yeah.
So RDA, most of that is going to be TID 8. Can we do any increment sharing?
That's on my to-do list. We're going to look at, I don't know what TIF 8 increment's going to look like yet. What I want to look at in 19 is look at TIF 7 and see if we can do some increment sharing there, over to.
Well, I think that increment, I, I think TID 3 and 4 both have, are in the black.
They are. TID 3 only has a couple of years. I, and this is something I need to work with Gary, but I, I don't know if you have to set up increment sharing in five-year windows. And the problem with those is they're out pretty soon, so.
Okay.
It's, it's definitely something I have a star next to. I just don't know if it's the answer right now. And I'll have to work with Gary Becker on that. But there is opportunity for increment sharing right now and we'll work through that in 19. The TIF 8 restructure creates some issues because we just don't know what the answer is right now or what it's going to do.
One other thing that's on our radar with that downtown TIF that's going to be closing is we have until 2021 if we want to do any projects out of that before it closes in 2026. And one of the things that we're going to be looking at in 2019 is whether or not we want to look at possibly doing some work on Main Street, the sidewalks, the crosswalks are getting in pretty rough shape. And there might be an opportunity to use some of that excess before we close out that TIF to address the downtown area. So we'll be probably talking about that this time next year.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just had a, I missed it kind of, but you're, have you, you looked at what the anticipated growth of our tax base is going to be for the next couple of years? I know you don't have a crystal ball on that, but do you have any sense about that? I think you mentioned something about one or two percent or?
It's just a guess at this point, Sid. I didn't want to get too aggressive on it, it's just the nature of, of this. Let me.
I think some of that's.
I didn't put this in the presentation anywhere, but, and it's kind of hard to see. Let me see if I can make.
You know, some of that's going to be based on what's going on with the economy and the market. And some of it's going to be based on council decisions. You know, where are we going to invest the money? Are we going to continue to invest money in the Whitewater Park in hopes that it brings people to move to Stoughton? The RDA area is certainly an investment. We have an annexation request that we're working on right now for the property out on Highway 51 going toward B. We still have Kettle Park West Phase 2 and they're going to be bringing us an updated proposal here. And the next, I think we meet with them next week. Part of that is going to be up to the council and, and what, what they want to do and where we're willing to, you know, invest our time and money to make projects move forward. So some of that will be policy decision.
That's exactly my point, and that is that where we put our money, I think it's, has to look at, you know, our, our tax base. You know, if it's going to improve our tax base, then I think those are the positive parts of what we should be anticipating. And if it's, if we, if we don't get, you know, potentially an increase in our tax base, then how are we going to pay for it? So I think whatever our project should be, should be looking for in the future is to how we can improve our, the number of people here who move in and are retained and also our, our, the much additional taxes we're going to get based on our, so it's bang for the buck for me.
I, I think if you look at what the, the city has planned over the last few years in terms of TIF sick, it ticks and the work that needs to be done there, it's 2.6 million dollars, but we're already seeing interest in that property. We, I ran the numbers in terms of windows of equalized value that we would need to be able to pay off that debt. Gary Becker said, yeah, it looks reasonable, I think we can easily do that. If we look at the work that the RDA, RDA is doing down 5 and TIF 8, that's only going to grow the base. You throw in the Whitewater Park, that's only going to help out TIF 5 and TIF 8. The work that Brett's group is doing with the streets, everybody's happy about that. That can only improve property values. So I, I think it really is geared towards growing the city and its tax base. And this slide here kind of gives you an idea of what the equalized value has done over the last however many years. You see why I was a little hesitant to get real aggressive in my analysis and increase in the equalized value because, you know, you never know what's going to happen with the economy and you can see what happened starting in 2008. You saw that dip with the economy. How long can the economy continue at this rate? Who knows? But I don't want to bet on it at this point. So that's why I was a little less aggressive with my growth numbers.
This certainly shows a, a steady increase.
Yep, yeah, it looks good. And that doesn't include 18, so. So in terms of actual CIP, like I said, I, I don't know how much more we can whittle this down. I think, you know, I think the big questions are, are, are you good with the amounts that we're planning on spending on 19 for the Whitewater? I think they're reasonable costs. I think it's under 100. I don't think it's even close to 100, actually maybe up to around 80,000 or so to get these studies done that the DNR really wants. I think that's, it's a fair amount of money, it's a, it's a good amount of money to spend to find out if we really can do this or not and see what the DNR says.
What is patrol truck?
Plow truck.
There you go. It's a plow truck. We have more roads to plow.
Why is it, why they call it patrol truck?
I don't know.
There we go, who knows?
Been waiting all night to answer this question.
Actually, the first time I heard that was in 2016 when I came to Stoughton. So essentially, it's a plow truck that's also a dump truck. It could be a Norwegian thing, I really don't know. So it's actually a replacement truck. And we're also looking at, every year we analyze our fleet and we're trying to shrink our fleet and do different things through efficiencies. So we, it's a replacement vehicle for a, a truck that we just got rid of a month, a month ago, so.
You don't have to be a police officer to drive it.
Not yet, but we'll, we'll see how it shakes out.
All right, I do have another question here. Under administration and general fund outlay, we're borrowing for a community-wide survey. And it seems to me, since we have so much money in our undesignated fund balance, that this would be an item that we could just take from our undesignated fund balance rather than borrowing for it.
Yeah, I'd be fine with that.
That's fine.
I thought we, CIP, we decided not to do that study?
No, we decided to bring it here.
Okay.
I wasn't sure, I wasn't really sure where to put it, you know, if I should put it in the operations budget. I wasn't sure, I wasn't really sure where to put it, you know, if I should put it in the operations budget. It's kind of teetering on the dollar amount in our policy for borrowing. So after we talked to leadership, we put it in here. We can take it out of the undesignated fund balance and not borrow for it. That's fine, too.
I mean, it, it, you know, it kind of fits in with our undesignated fund balance policy, you know, because it's a, it's a one-time deal.
It's not really.
You know, and it's a, it's a, it's a something that's special one-time.
That's fine.
Okay.
Um, that, that might answer a question, and that is that Regina's point is that the, the, uh, this.
Why don't you speak into the mic, please?
Residents of Stoughton maybe, maybe want a Whitewater Park, and, and that might, might address that issue of, do people indeed want that particular thing?
Just did a whole park study on that.
So, I, I don't know what, what the analysis would look like, but, uh.
I guess I, I'm not, I'm not clear. Are you relating this to the survey?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
And generally, generally going back to your question about the fifty-two dollar increase in taxes, whether or not they, we are putting our money in the right places, so.
Good. So I think to finalize this, and we can, we can finalize this on the, the meeting on November first. Again, if you have any questions in the meantime, we can talk about it at the twenty-fifth meeting as well, but unless we see some items that you want to pull out outside of the survey, I think, you know, the CIP budget is what it is. Um, we just need to be able to swallow nineteen at this point, and we'll move on from there and, and see how twenty twenty shakes out, so. So I'd anticipate this getting passed with the budget unless any major changes come in the next couple of weeks, so. And those would have to come from you folks. Leadership has been through this. Um, we've whittled it down as much as possible that we think we can, so. Unless we see any changes from you, this is what the CIP budget would look like that we're going to ultimately approve at the November thirteenth meeting. Okay, so agenda items, we went through the CIP budget survey. Um, now we will get into the executive summary. So this moves, what happened there? Showing up? There we go, okay. Um, this is more on the operating side of things, so we'll start moving into that, and that's what the next couple of meetings are going to be about. Um, I think, I guess before we get into any of this, the, the plan tonight, once we move into kind of the individual department and fund budgets, I'm going to go through them. We have a couple scheduled for tonight. I'll just ask that the department heads come up and sit with me and ask any specific questions that I may not be able to answer in terms of their own budgets, so. But we'll go through this slideshow first. You can see the major items, the driving factors of the budget. We did build in a compensation plan adjustment for three percent. That's across the board for the employees at the city of Stoughton. Um, we saw a health insurance increase over eighteen of five point nine five percent, including the addition of four tiers now. So we went from just having a family and single plan to a family, self plus spouse, self plus children, and single. Um, we see a debt service increase of four hundred and fifty-one thousand, three hundred and thirty-one dollars, and last year's number was three hundred and nine thousand, five hundred and ninety-five. Okay, to be expected. We've got a lot of big borrowings over the last couple of years. Net new construction was one point five nine percent. I think it was closer to one point seven last year. Um, the state road allotment amounts increased by a hundred and sixty thousand, five hundred. That was a, a nice surprise at the eleventh hour in terms of the budget, so that helped out quite a bit. And then the water and electric pilot increased by ninety-five thousand dollars. The weird thing with the water and electric pilot, it's kind of been, I don't want to say incorrectly budgeted over the years, but budgeted differently than I would do it. Um, past finance directors have budgeted on a cash basis, and it's actually an item that you have to look at from an accrual basis. So they're, they've almost been a year behind in terms of budgeting the water and electric pilot amounts, the payment in lieu of taxes amount. So I made it correct for nineteen, so that's why we see that big jump. This won't happen every single year. This is just kind of a one-time jump right now, so. It's a big help in nineteen, but we, we won't see this, um, in future years unless there's a big project or something like that, so. Any questions on the driving factors? Okay, um, I know some of this is a little bit hard to see, so hopefully you can see it on your screen a little bit, but I just wanted to show you a little bit of historical perspective in terms of where we've been in budget versus actuals. Um, I know Denise will like this. So you can see two thousand and fifteen budgeted revenues to actual, we were actually two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars over. Uh, a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars over budgeted revenue in two thousand and sixteen, and four hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars over in budgeted, over the budget in two thousand and seventeen. Now, this, what this told me was I could be a little bit more aggressive in terms of how I really looked at the revenues budgeted for two thousand and nineteen, because we have been consistently over by, by fair amounts.
Have, have you seen any patterns to this?
No, and it's, there's so many factors. It's hard to see.
I, I was just kind of wondering, yeah.
I tried to look at them by line item by line item, um, and do some analytics where I could. I think a lot of it was being a little less aggressive on the, like, the state road allotment amounts than they could have. I think a big chunk of this is the pilot and the way it's been budgeting. I think that's a big chunk of it as well. What happened in seventeen, I have no idea, honestly. That's just a, that's a big amount. Uh, you can see expenditures. Uh, we're under budget forty-six thousand dollars, over budget, um, which happens sometimes, and then under budget last year by a hundred and twelve thousand dollars, and you can see what our change in actual fund balances would, was for those years, so.
Are these, this is the total fund balance, all the different fund balances?
It's not on the sign, but it's total fund balance. Um, but anytime you're adding to fund balance, some of that will go down the sign for the most part. Um, you can see we've been adding to the fund balance fair amounts over the last three years. And we hope to continue that, but what, what this showed me was I could be a little bit more aggressive on the revenue side and maybe not as conservative on the expense side as we have in the past. Not a gamble, because I was still, it's the nature of the beast. You're still conservative on both sides. Um, but it, it showed me that some things were off, and I, I could look at them a little bit closer and maybe increase them. So any questions on the history behind this?
And I would say Jamin's been a little bit modest as far as the amount of time he's put into this. I mean, him and AJ went through line by line with, and with all the department heads on the payroll specifically, and really went with the actual projected numbers, including the three percent increase. And then person by person, basically, for the, uh, for the health insurance changes as well. So they really did their due diligence as they went through this thing with the help from the department heads.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
It's been, it's been fun. Um, again, sorry, these don't show up too well on the screen, but we can look at these on the, on, on your screens as well. Um, but specifically what I did here is I tried to identify the big changes in revenues um, in terms of what we're looking at. So you can see the first line there, the property taxes, and I just showed the variance to the eighteen budget. Um, it's going up five hundred and twenty-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-five. You can see four hundred and fifty-one thousand of that has to do with debt service change, and then seventy-three thousand of it is net new construction. Um, the state road allotment we talked about, that went up a hundred and sixty thousand this year. I think we're, we're expecting that to continue to increase. I don't know if it'll continue to increase at these amounts, but I think Brett's spending about the same amount every single year, and every time you do that, these numbers get bigger. Um, I don't know exactly how all the formulas work, but I, I think we can, we, we would expect to see these numbers continue to jump up a little bit. Uh, you can see the electric utility pilot. We touched on that. It's going up sixty-five thousand dollars. Now, interest, this is one I think we've been maybe a little, especially in this, in this environment with raising interest, rising interest rates. Um, I did bump that up sixty thousand dollars compared to two thousand and eighteen. I think year-to-date, we're over, we're over a hundred and ten thousand, and that's just through October at this point, so, or through September, I think. Um, so we got a little more aggressive with that. You can see I have a note there. Uh, WISK is one of the financial institutions that we use that most of our money goes to. They have different classes of investments that we can use. One is just kind of just a checking account, and then they have, um, some more like money market-based investments, some longer-term duration investments, and they manage all of that for us. We, we tell them what to do with it and where we want our money, and then they manage the investing side of it. Um, but you can see, over the last three years, that WISK balance has been about six point five million dollars. That's the average balance that we've had on hand with them. Um, I, I, it's about a one percent estimated return. Current WISK rates are approaching two percent at this point, so. I think even though ninety thousand looks big, um, I still think it's a conservative amount in terms of interest, but again, I don't always want to bank on that, too. But, um, I think we're anticipating one, if not two more increases by the end of the year, um, in interest rates, so. That's why you see that interest income going up in two thousand and nineteen. Taxi grant, you can see is going up fifty thousand dollars. Uh, the actual eighteen amounts were, should have been closer to a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. Um, that was not any issue with the budgeting. It's just that the taxi grant amounts came in later. Uh, we usually get those final amounts in December. Um, but generally, they're pretty much offset by the expenses, so it's like an in and out. We just have to kind of work through that. Uh, the personal property aid, this is new in two thousand and nineteen. Uh, the state determined some categories of personal property are now exempt from property tax. Um, but to alleviate the impact that it would have on some municipalities, the state said, you know what, we're going to pony up and give you what that amount would have been. This amount is scheduled to continue. I don't think they have a drop dead date on when it's going to stop, but this amount will not change over the next few years. Um, so they're not updating it. It's just, here you go. This should help you kind of get over the hump in terms of losing that property in your tax base. Water, you, water utility pilot, again, went up thirty thousand dollars. Again, that's just, you can see my note there. Eighteen was actually, in, in eighteen, we budgeted the seventeen amount, um, which you can see here, I guess you can't see my, my mouse here, but if you look at the twenty-seven seventeen activity there, four hundred and twenty thousand, three oh five, the budgeted amount was four hundred and twenty. Now, those numbers come from the utility. It's just, they got put into the city budget incorrectly. So that's, you can see how that works there, that we've always been a year behind on that pilot number. Um, donations from the police department, uh, historically hadn't been budgeted. I worked with chief on this one, and, and this was just to, to closer reflect some historical amounts there. And then we are actually utilizing TIF three. We're going to transfer in about ten thousand dollars just to close the deficit that we had budgeted originally. So we're starting to get back some of that money that's owed to us from TIF three at this point. Uh, overall, you can see we're changing by nine hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars or seven percent. A big chunk of that is property taxes, state road allotment, and then the pilot amounts. So any questions on the revenue changes? Um, again, sorry, this doesn't show up very well, but I just kind of wanted to give you a picture in terms of what the actual, what the actual wages are doing at this point. Um, so if we go through some of the bigger ticket items here.
Can you just increase it just a little bit?
I don't know how to do it. Do you mind know how to do that? I could pull the PDF up. Would that be easier? Then we can maximize it and go through it. Let's just do that.
Because I'm sitting in the closest, and I can't read it, so I can't imagine people sitting further away.
I have my paper copy.
Roll it.
What's that?
We can go through this, just line by line here. No, I guess that's as big as it's going to get. I apologize, but we'll touch, I, I can go through these and explain them to you, and then if there's any questions, we can walk through them. Um, but again, I just kind of highlighted the big ticket changes. Anytime we go through any of this, um, everything's being very weird right now.
How, how come we have two community service officers?
It's not two actual community service officers. It is, it's just the way it's split in the budget. It's actually just one. But it's just, it's two, two different account codes in the ledger, so you can basically combine them into one. It's one community service officer. Um, here we go. I think this is working now. Okay. So if we start going down the row here, if we look at some of the big changes, I'll scroll over here. Uh, the first big change here, and these go in alphabetical order, so you can see, here's overtime. Uh, that increased thirty-nine thousand dollars. Um, again, we just budgeted closer to what the historical amounts were. If you look at our seventeen activity.
Okay, I have a question on this.
Yeah.
Okay, so Tim and the chief, chief's not here, but.
Be right back.
Well, I was just wondering, would it be more economical for us to just hire another police officer and reduce the amount of overtime? Did you guys explore that, you know, possibility?
Um, I didn't have that conversation with the chief this year, and he can explain it when he gets in here. I can tell you, we've had an unusual amount of retirements and new officers in the last couple of years. And what we're, what I've learned is that when we hire new officers, there's a quite a large amount of training, and they have to ride in tandem during the training. And a lot of times when that happens, it creates additional overtime. So the question was, is, did we look at hiring another officer to reduce the overtime? And I, we didn't have that conversation.
No, we've not had that conversation, and you're exactly right. When, uh, it just takes, it, it usually takes about, uh, nine months after hire before they're actually on their own and where they could impact the schedule. So it, it takes a long time to get them trained enough where we're not having to backfill, and unfortunately, we don't have enough staff to adequately backfill normally occurring vacancies. Uh, we have usually about one officer per day that we can allow off without it creating overtime. Um, depending on how the schedule falls, that might, you know, might move up to two depending on the day of the week and how the schedule goes, because our schedule's both mostly based on a six, three, six days on, three days off. So it really becomes difficult to maintain that minimum staffing level with the number of people that we have, especially if somebody's out, we're short a position, uh, somebody's on, uh, sick leave for an extended amount of time or family leave. Those are all impacting, you know, the overtime budget. Um, plus, and it's, it's kind of a little skewed because we also get a lot of grants that reimburse, um, some of our traffic grants reimburse overtime. Uh, for example, I think in two thousand and seventeen, we had about thirty or thirty-five thousand dollars with a grant funding that really kind of offset that number a little bit. We're looking at the same amount this year, but, you know, with the unexpected vacancies that we had this year, we had a retirement that came up unexpectedly, plus two, um, resignations that really caused, threw the whole budget into, into, uh, you know, some difficulty in staffing.
So my question was, um, if, if you had another officer, how would that impact your overtime? You know, because it seems like, you know, the overtime keeps growing over time, that at some point, really, why wouldn't we be hiring another officer so that we can reduce the overtime and, of course, reduce the stress on the officers? You know, that have to then fill in. You know, so I, you know, I don't know if it's appropriate this year, but maybe we should really be taking a serious look at it, you know, for next year, you know, if in fact, you know, hiring another officer is going to help control some of the overtime, and I guess only you can answer that.
Yeah, and I guess I have to answer that with a caveat. It really depends. I mean, because it takes one point five positions to add one staff member to a rotating twenty-four-hour shift. So it takes one and a half people just to make a, an impact on one shift. So, and if you look at, you know, per capita caseload workload, um, you know, we are behind and have been behind for a long time. But can I directly say that, kind of the caveat, I put it on, uh, uh, last year when we were talking about adding that twenty-third position, which we did, it, you know, you can take the, and lower the overtime, but it's really impacted by things that are still out of our control, and we can't really directly link it, but does it help? Absolutely. Every time you increase the staff size, it helps to alleviate that amount of overtime. There's this, because it's shift work, I, and I guess I have to put that caveat on it, it just makes it really difficult to um, really say that, okay, yeah, if I take forty thousand dollars out, put it to a new position, will it really reduce forty thousand dollars with overtime? It's a crapshoot, quite honestly, because it depends on what happens during the year, depends on the vacancies, depends on everything else, so. But yeah, every position helps because we just do not have enough staff to absorb long-term vacancies anyways, so.
Yeah, I think we were fortunate last year to add an officer. It wasn't a unanimous vote by any stretch of the imagination. It wasn't in the budget. And then Alder was able to use transportation funds, which there was a question about the sustainability of that fund for that position. And then we also were able to add the community services position, which I think is, is. And then we also were able to add the community services position, which I think has helped some of the load. You know, and the priority really is, is, and we're going to talk about this, is, you know, is compensation and not additional staffing. We do have additional staffing requests as well, but it's really difficult under the current state formula to do either. And, you know, we'll get into that conversation, but it's not, I mean, it's not a bad idea to look at that. I don't know if it would reduce the overtime, because things always seem to come up. Plus, you have other costs, you have, you have your benefits package, you have another vehicle, so it's not just hiring another officer. There's really more to the package than just the person.
And kind of to illustrate that point, if you look at what we have this year with that additional staff person that was scheduled for 2018, that person isn't going to be hired until November 5th. Because of the vacancies and everything else that have occurred, we haven't even realized that additional position in 2018, and won't, because that person won't be ready for solo patrol till probably sometime in early 2019, so.
Director, can you have?
Those are the exact points that I wanted to make. First of all, that we've had all of these turnovers within the department, whether it be either through leaving the department by, for another position and/or retiring. But the other piece to look at here is, $39,000 is much less than the cost of salary benefits, training, and then the vehicle. But like we said, we definitely need more staffing, but I want you to be able to put the two into perspective. You're talking a minimum salary of $40,000 plus the additional costs of everything else, just to take into consideration.
Yeah, well, no, I know it would be about $82,000 with benefits, it's just that, I know that, you know, the overtime, I mean, over $100,000, and I know that, you know, the police department has been over budgeted, you know, as per the audits for the last five years. So, you know, so to me, it's like, well then, obviously, there needs to be, you know, more staff if in fact, you know, you're spending all of this money.
Well, the one thing I want to point out though, is if you look at-
I want to cut this off here a little bit, because you kind of hit this quite hard. But Pat, you had one question before we end this.
You know, I don't know if overtime is the reason you'd add staff, but how much, when you're at full staff, what's your staffing levels on the road?
Our minimums are two per shift, with the third one from 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM.
That's your minimum?
That's a minimum.
But if you're fully staffed, what are they?
If you're fully staffed, that kind of fluctuates depending on which shift. Of course, we tried to load, overload the PM shift, and actually, the power shift, which is at 7:00 P to 3:00 A, because historically, that's our busiest times. So it's, we look at trying to have three patrol officers, starting at 2:00, and running till at least 3:00 AM. So that's kind of what our goal is. And if everybody is there, we can sometimes get flush, we can actually have four patrol officers and a supervisor available. But that's very rare, I mean, three or four times a year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jane?
Moving down to the next one, the next one that pops out, you can see salaries, we're seeing about an 8% increase. But again, this has to do with the restructure in the clerks department, where Holly moved to a salary position, and then of course, the finance restructure as well. Any questions on salaries, in terms of the jump there? The next one here, you can see the seasonal temporary, you can see jumped up 14%, but in the scheme of things, it's only about $18,000. Again, this has to do with a new program with the recreation department, summer day camp, and then parks and streets. It's up $12,060, but I don't know if that's, it's not really due to increased staffing or anything like that. I think it just might be some items that were possibly missed in the 18 budget. We move down to the next one, which I believe would be the wages, which is where my cursor is, right here. You see 3% across the board, that one worked out. The wages, community service officer, again, there's two lines here, but it's just one position. You can see where it was budgeted at 599 hours in 18, it's up to 1,039 in 2019. I honestly, and Chief can maybe speak to this, but I think that might honestly be offset by the amount of revenue coming in from that position.
Yeah, probably pretty coarse when you look at the parking enforcement that's being done now versus what was done previously.
You see, the overall change is big, 79%, but in the scheme of things, it's about $9,000. But again, I think the amount of revenue we're going to see come in from that position is well worth the increase there. Next line is the dispatch wages, you can see it went up 1%, but again, Mary, is it Lincoln? Is that who's here? Her replacement came in at $3 less per hour, so we're not seeing that 3% increase, because we got some labor in at less of a rate. Next one, wages part-time. Public Works is up $6,164. Again, it had nothing to do with a big change, I think it was just some pieces maybe missed in 2018. The library amount too, the $20,511, and AJ can even speak to this, I don't know if Richard's here or not, but we went through this with a fine tooth comb, tried to figure it out, there was no major increase in hours, no real increase in staffing. We looked at it up and down, and I think it basically comes down to a point of 18, we couldn't figure out where that number came from. So that's why the jump seems so big, but I don't know if 18 is truly correct. When I look at kind of the prorated amounts, they're a little bit closer to what 19 is going to look like, as opposed to what we had budgeted for 18. And we looked at it up and down, so.
I even got my calculator out.
She did, AJ got her calculator out. So it was all hands on deck with this one, because it just looked, it looked really weird to me, but it, we, I sat down with Richard, we went through every single staff, we even moved hours around, and-
They were just mistakes from last year?
That's what we think.
That's all I can think of, and I don't want to say, I don't want to speak bad about Tammy, Tammy did a great job, it's just, I think we're going to see a little bit of this over a lot of, some of these topics, because I'm the third person in three years to do a budget. And we just look at it differently, and I'm not saying the information isn't out there, it's just sometimes really hard to find, so.
Well, we're all human, we all make mistakes, and that's a pretty small one, considering, you know, the size of our staff, so.
Yeah, it just looks weird, because it's such a big number for part-time wages, but I just really think it was something maybe just fell through the cracks in 18. The last one, so wages, senior case manager. We just had some incorrect rates budgeted in 18 for that one, so that's $2,500 of that increase there. And then the bottom line there, you can't see the title, but that's wages, that's the fire volunteer wage. I think there was a small increase, do we call it the stipend, what do we call it?
Correct, yes, stipend.
A small increase in the actual stipend over 18, which was agreed to. I believe we went through personnel committee and wherever else it had to go to, and then we do budget those positions at full strength in case we do get the volunteers come in.
Keeping in mind that we're six to seven short from, seven short from full strength right now.
Bottom, if you really look at, so I guess if, to sum this all up, if we pull out kind of overtime, longevity, other items, this, what these numbers here that I'm kind of circling around my cursor, that really equates to like hourly wages, not the overtime. It's kind of the standard wages that we're just going to pay for people working their normal hours. You can see, we see an overall increase of 4.87. Again, that's due to some step increases within certain departments that were agreed to in advance, small level increases in hours from different departments. But you see 4.87, in the scheme of a 3% overall increase is pretty reasonable. So the next one, this is employee benefits, this would be, and I'm going through these in detail, because I think over 70% of our operating budgets is wages, benefits, and health insurance. So I figured we'd look at these and just get through some of the questions. Employee benefits, this is for everybody, not just general fund, this would include all the other funds that have labor in them as well, same as the analysis that we just went through. You see, what we're anticipating is actual, actually a decrease in the change, in change to 18 budget, which seems weird. But if we look at how things have been budgeted in the past, about $50,000 in budgeted costs were eliminated from the general government department for self-insured losses. We didn't really eliminate that amount, I just reclassified it, because it's not really an employee benefit, it's a different kind of cost, and it kind of skewed what the actual type of benefit costs there are. So it's FICA, it's WRS, it's those types of costs that are really related to people working. Self-insured losses, things like that, it's kind of a contingency in terms of changing benefits halfway through the year, lawsuits, things like that. I really didn't see it as kind of an employee benefit type cost, so it's still in the budget, it's not just categorized as employee benefits. So that's a big part of the drop. $23,000 was budgeted for income continuation, I did not budget any in 19, they're still freezing the premium on that. Until we hear otherwise, I will continue to not budget for it. And then we did see a decrease in the WRS rates as well. So it looks weird that employee benefits are going down, but if we look at the percentage of payroll, which is the bottom percentage there, we're still hovering in that 14 range, which is where we were for 15 and 16. So it appears reasonable to me, we were able to explain the differences away. And the next one, I apologize for this one in advance, but this one drove me crazy too, and I could not make sense of it, but we looked at it pretty closely, AJ and I. I'll blow this up a little bit here. So this is health and dental, okay, so if we look at the 19 requested budget here, it's $1,120,000, okay? It's a $115 change from the amended budget for 18, okay? Didn't make any sense to me, because we're seeing a 5.95% increase in overall insurance costs. But when I went through and did the analysis, again, I think this comes down to a case of how 18 was budgeted versus how I'm doing it, where the information really lies. All of this information here kind of boils down to this analysis down here. So I calculated out an annual premium here of $1,660,000, that's just health insurance. And these numbers are actual, these, these numbers right here, these are actual employees and the tiers that they're in currently. Dental premium of $69,479, we do have a senior center grant that's covered, that covers a portion of this cost, so I back that out. And you can see where I'm calculating my premium versus what's in the actual budget, which is that $1,120,000. We're over a little bit, because we do know of one employee in the city that's going to get married, so we're switching him up to self plus spouse. So that's where we get to that number for the city, and then I did the same analysis for the utilities. At the end of the day, what made me comfortable with this number, and AJ helped me out with this as well, so if you add up this number here, this number here, which are the As, this is city and utility, I come out to a calculated premium, monthly premium of $120,619. And per the court's presentation, they had $120,562, I'm $57 off per month, the conservative way. I just, I had to be comfortable with this number, I had to. I, it didn't make sense to 18, but it just, it made sense to me, so. Sorry for the ugly slide, but it's there, in case you didn't believe me.
You know somebody loves numbers.
When I met my wife when we were on our first date, she asked me what I do for a living, and I said, I do big calculator stuff. All right, so the bottom line, 2018 tax levy has 1.59% net new construction. It's $113,412, the amount that actually went into our actual levy base is closer to $77,000 because of the way the personal property aid is being created this year. Now, this is, don't, this isn't gospel, this isn't written, we do not have the assessed value yet. We don't know what that number is yet, we're still waiting on the state. They released some of them about an hour before this meeting, and I was really excited, because I thought I could give you an actual impact of this. Stoughton's wasn't finalized yet, so we should see that on the 26th, so we'll see it before we have to pass the budget, we'll know what the actual overall impact is. But I did a really conservative estimate of what our assessed value assumption would be, and what our overall levy is going to be, which is this $9,32,000, so, and we're taxed on our assessed value. So even though our levy's going up 6.17%, we're anticipating a bit of a drop in the overall city mil rate this year, okay? And we've been seeing that over the last few years, it's a little counterintuitive, but that's what it does. It spreads, it spreads that levy amount over more of a base, so. Again, I'll have final numbers for you, I feel like I was pretty conservative on this number here, which is driving everything. But we'll have to wait and see what actually happens with everything here, so. Yes?
What is the number that we're able to increase for pushing purposes?
There's two numbers, net new construction, and then our change in debt service, which is so out of-
I think you need to say, speak that into the mic very clearly, because people need to understand-
Yeah, it's-
How limited we are.
The struggle is real, let me, let me just open something here. So here's my recap, I'll blow this up a little bit here. So this is the formula that goes into creating what our actual base levy is. We were able to increase it $113,000, that's really for operating purposes, okay? That's the net new construction number, now what the state said to us this year is, well, we're giving you personal property aid, so you have to drop that out of your actual base levy as well. So even though we're getting this $40,000, it has an impact, lasting impact, because we don't get to increase our actual base levy by that amount. So it just means that as our, as the years go on, we just get to increase our levy by less, is really what happens. So ultimately, we're working with an operating change of $113,000 from property tax, okay? That's not what really makes our budget work. You're looking at the water and electric utility pilot is a lifesaver every single year. Brett's state road allotment, that comes in, that's a fair amount of money. It's all the kind of additional work that the other departments are doing to pull in additional sources of revenue, plus, you know, state aid revenue as well. So we all talk about property taxes, $113,000 isn't going to cut it. And then the other piece of it that goes into our actual levy is this increase in debt service. So basically, what we get to increase our debt service by is, so this is our new, our new increase in debt service for 2019, and then we'd have to, we basically subtract out last year's, and that's just a moving number, we have an amortization schedule set up. So the difference between this and that is $451,000. So alter this $524,675 change in our levy limit. $73,000 of it equates to net new construction, and the change in the formula for the personal property aid, and everything else that related. That's, that's the crunch we're under right now.
Do I understand that we can raise our operational expenses by $73,000?
In the scheme of a, from an operating standpoint of a nine, $10 million, actual operating budget.
And salaries and wages are-
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's, it's a really small amount in the scheme of our budget though, it's just, it's hard, it's tough.
It's hard.
I have a question then. When TID III closes, we get taxes from that. Can that be then added to our total levy?
Yes.
Yes.
That will get added in, so as TIFs close, then we get that, we, you lose all the other taxing jurisdiction revenue for the specific TIF, and then they just get taxed like everybody else, and we get that eight, $9 mil rate for the, for the city portion of it, yeah. TIF III is going to have a fair amount of money too, that they can kick over to us when it closes.
Okay, so say, so say TID III closed next year, and we got $200,000 from TID III, then our total levy would be $9,200 and some odd dollars?
Not necessarily, maybe I misspoke, so it doesn't necessarily increase your levy, it just, it spreads out what your levy can be taxed against.
Okay. So it doesn't increase our levy?
No, it doesn't, what it, what it ends up doing is, it spreads the total dollar amount over more properties.
Okay, do we have any options of maybe going to referendum? To actually have those monies, ask the people, can we use our now TID monies to increase our levy? I don't know if you have the answer, if you don't, can we find this out? Because we have been painted into a corner so tight, that there is no way for us to hire people that we need and to do the things that we basically need to run this operation, because of the way the state has micromanaged us. And I mean, and this is exactly what it is, it's micromanaging us, you know, and saying, you can only- It's micromanaging us, you know, and saying, "You can only do this one thing to raise your tax levy." And yet we have increases in healthcare costs, inflation, we need people. So that's, if you can look into that, I'd appreciate it.
Well, if we look at TIP three, this is last year's, but they're about four hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars in total incremental revenue of that. And that will change because, again, it's just the incremental change in that particular district, but this will at least ballpark it from a conservative estimate. You could basically take about a third of that roughly, and a little less than a third, I guess, and that would be what the city's share would be going forward after the TIF actually closes, so.
I just looked at my own taxes, and it was about forty percent of the tax bill went to the city. So I looked at those numbers, and I said, "That was about two hundred thousand dollars from TID three that we would be getting." And that could go a long ways towards helping us implement the wage scale.
I agree. Something to look into, for sure. And it's kind of addressed later in the presentation, too. Not that specific point, but the other part of it. So again, I'll get you good numbers here. Maybe we'll get it before the twenty-sixth, so I can bring it to the twenty-fifth meeting. But for sure, by November first, we'll know what this is going to do to our overall mill rate. Doesn't necessarily mean people are paying less because assessed values continue to increase. I think the city's been pretty aggressive in reassessing properties every time there's change, so. So you might still get complaints that their taxes went up, but their mill rate then, so. Little bit of tax rate history, again. You can see where we've been, starting in two thousand and nine. You know, basically, an increase from two thousand and nine all the way up through fifteen, and then we see it start dropping in sixteen, seventeen, and we're estimating the eighteen tax rate to drop as well. Again, this isn't a final number, but we'll have that in the next couple of weeks. So we're seeing a trend here where the mill rates have been decreasing. But again, assessed values continue to increase, but the city's been growing, too. So that's why we're seeing this. The amount of levy that we're allowed just doesn't grow all that much, so we would anticipate seeing this. Okay, so these are just, I set this up to have just items to consider as we move through these workshops. I went through the department requests here, and we'll go through these pretty quickly unless you have any specific questions. We'll circle back around to these as we go through the individual department budgets. But you can see here what fire's requesting. They're requesting an increase in the fire tech hours from thirty to forty. That's about approximately fourteen thousand, five hundred dollar impact, not budgeted right now. The request came in for twelve full-time firefighters. The estimated impact is eighteen, eight hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, not budgeted right now. Public Works did request an additional seasonal employee, approximately sixty-three hundred dollars. Again, this position is already on staff. It's been budgeted for for nineteen. Library, again, this was kind of the issue where we had a hundred additional sub-hours added, two hundred and eight additional hours for youth services coordinator, but then these costs were offset by a reduction in actual shelve hours. Richard and I spent a lot of time going through his budget line by line by employee and working through the hours, and basically, the impact was almost zero in terms of the overall hours that he requested, so we were able to do that for him. Police, we can see we had one additional patrol officer requested, approximately eighty-two thousand, five hundred dollar cost, currently not budgeted. One part-time records clerk, dispatcher circuit coordinator, approximately twenty-two thousand dollars, not currently budgeted. The increase in community service officer from five ninety-nine to a thousand and thirty-nine, we kind of touched on that. Again, we're under the impression that will be offset by the revenues that that position brings in. And then we did make room for detective promotion, just basically moving a patrol officer up to a detective position, and that has been budgeted for. Recreation Department requested an administrative assistant, approximately sixteen thousand, one hundred dollar estimated impact, not currently budgeted for, and then an increase in seasonal admin position from five ninety-nine to a thousand and thirty-nine, eighty-five hundred dollars and not budgeted for at this point. Some other items to consider, senior center, partial funding on the program, volunteer coordinator, grant monies of forty-five thousand, four hundred are promised for nineteen with the remaining ninety-two hundred being funded by the city, which I believe is coming out of a reserved fund balance bucket of the fund balance. Planning, code enforcement position was asked, was requested, fifty-three thousand dollars. This is assuming full benefits, estimated cost, and currently not budgeted for. So those were the staffing requests that I received. So we'll continue down with items to consider. Again, everybody's heard this phrase, right sizing. Leadership's been talking about it almost monthly every time we have a leadership meeting. I think everybody feels this is a priority as opposed to actual additional staffing. So we're going to go through this, again, just things to keep in mind. In terms of two thousand and nineteen, you know, the budget's been kind of set. We have a little room to work with, but it's not an entire answer, so we'll kind of get to what the options are. But the estimated fully loaded increase to the city is approximately three hundred and fifteen to three hundred and thirty thousand dollars at this point. Again, this was just an estimate in terms of FICA, WRS, things like that. Challenges we're running into is increased annual funding to allow for continued pay increases following the right sizing. That's something we need to consider. The net new construction method makes this cost prohibitive. You could see a hundred and thirteen thousand dollar net new construction number just isn't going to cut it in terms of giving pay increases and doing right sizing as well. So the answer is we need to find a sustainable source of revenue. Use of unassigned fund balance or borrowing is not the long-term answer for this. This will happen one way or another. We can either do nothing, see frustrated employees, lose the experience that we have, and hire the replacements at the right-sized amount regardless, or retain the talent that the city already has. And I think that's everybody's goal, and I think everybody feels very strongly about that. I haven't heard anybody object to that at all. We just need to find out a way to make this happen, okay? So here's our options. Implement a three percent wage increase across the board, done. We did it. I threw in a little lyric from one of my favorite bands here, a lot like trying to deal a gunshot wound with cause. The option two is right size the entire amount effective one-one-nineteen. Funds are obviously not available for this. Option three is meet in the middle, and that can be determined at a later date if we choose to go this route. But the city, in my estimation, does have funds available through TIP three funds, special assessments. We have some other kind of ancillary funds sitting out there that have the availability to make some of this happen. The problem is it's not a long-term answer. It's not sustainable at all. So we could do it and run the risk of not being able to keep doing it and really not even get pay increases for the next few years. So it's just, it's an option, but I don't like it because it's not the answer. It's not the long-term answer. So what's our favorite, it's our favorite forward word letter is the answer, levy slash referendum. Obviously, too late for nineteen to do, but I think we need to start having conversations about this for two thousand and twenty, and I think, you know, keep those conversations moving as we roll into two thousand and nineteen and have more time to dig into these numbers and get true, actual, the actual impacts of these with benefits and everything included in them. So you can see the city's two thousand and eighteen equalized value is the one point two billion dollars. This equates to an additional levy of twenty-eight dollars and thirty-seven cents per one hundred thousand dollar equalized value. So that would be the overall impact of that three hundred and thirty thousand dollar change. This would be a three percent increase over the two thousand and eighteen rate, or, you know, two dollars and thirty-six cents per month per hundred thousand dollars of equalized value. So just something to think about.
But that would be on top of a borrowing thing. So, I mean, it would be nice to, do you have a slide of the total, what it would be for equalized value? Or is that...
With the borrowing as well?
Huh?
With the borrow, like all of our borrowing estimates, too?
Mm-hmm.
A lot?
No.
Not in here, but I do have a paper copy.
How did I know that you would have done that?
Yeah, it's not a reference, but... So this would be if a referendum was approved, you're saying?
Yep. So what that is, what I just gave you, there'll be a paper copy here. So the top section, you already saw, that was with the CIP budget, and what I did in the bottom section here is just added in the right sizing estimate and what that would do to the rates. It's pretty straightforward. You see an increase of approximately twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty dollars per hundred thousand dollar equalized value to get this going, so. And again, the decision doesn't need to be made tonight, but the intent of this is to keep the discussion moving and really kind of lay out what the options are, and you're kind of limited in the options that are available at this point. So I think it's a real discussion that we need to have. And I know the mayor has, as part of his survey, I think we're going to try to address this topic in some form or fashion in terms of how the city feels about it, obviously, what their priorities are, things like that. In the scheme of things, if you can explain it down to the two dollars and thirty-six cents per month per hundred thousand dollar house, I mean, it's not that bad.
Well, I think that's why it's important for us to really take a look at the revenue that's going to be coming in through the TIDS, because that would not require us to have this kind of an increase. And I think that that would be much more palatable to folks, because this is money that we've already invested in making this happen, and we now have this tax revenue coming in, and the state is telling us we can't do certain things with it. And I think people in the community will understand that much better. And, you know, depending on how we phrase it, it's, it basically, you know, we would have two hundred thousand dollars to add to the levy and not increase, you know, their levy. So, you know, to me, that is one avenue that we really should be pursuing is, you know, passing some type of revenue, basic, referendum, basically saying that when TIDS mature and those taxes come available, they will be added to our levy. And there's no increase to the people in the community then. It's there. It's ours.
Yeah, it's something I'll definitely look at for nineteen. You know, work through it for nineteen.
That would be a statewide referendum, not a just a big...
I thought that we could do referendums in the community.
I know, but isn't it, the state is saying that we can't do this, right? Not, not our body of government in Stoughton.
No, yeah. It's the state legislature that has applied all of these restrictions and are micromanaging the local governments, you know?
Right. But I think for a referendum to say that now all TID money could be back used to the community would almost have to be a statewide referendum.
I don't think so.
I think it's once the TIF closes, and I think Denise is just saying, "Here's how we're going to treat the closing of this TIF and the portion that is generally what the city's portion is going to be." After it closes, then the state gets their share, the vocational schools, the county, the school district. It's determining what we do with our actual share of that pot and how it would impact the levy and the rates and everything like that. And that's going to be a little bit of analysis because there's just so many ins and outs in terms of the calculation, but it's definitely something I can look at early nineteen and start working with it. Another thing to keep in mind is we have an election coming up. Things could change. We just don't know yet.
Good hope.
Guys, can we move on? Because we've gone over this a couple times, and since we don't know, can we just leave it until we find more information and move on? Because we've got a lot of stuff to cover.
Okay, so other items to keep in mind, fund transfers from general fund. You can see the opera house is going down a little bit this year. Public safety building transfer from general fund is going up. And again, we'll go through all of these as we go through the department budgets. I just kind of wanted this as a roadmap for you folks as we go through these meetings. Library is up. Again, I think that came down to a two thousand and eighteen issue. Landmarks is up slightly, and then RDA is up to fifty-five thousand dollars. Just to give you an idea of what funds currently owe you right now, so TIF five owes you the five hundred and ninety-eight thousand plus the hundred and seventy-eight thousand at this point in time. One thing we need to keep in mind now is there's no increment expected for two thousand and nineteen. General fund will need the cash flow. TIF five's debt service, which is approximately a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, I did not levy for it at this point in time. If levy for, this would increase the overall levy by one point four or five percent or eleven dollars per hundred thousand dollar value. Ultimately, if we don't levy for this, what happens is if we have a perfect budget and we break even and it's like a zero-zero bottom line, this would eat into the unassigned fund balance at that point. So something to keep in mind, if you determine that you think we need to add this to the levy, let me know. As of right now, I did not include it. Again, I think maybe nineteen, to kind of push you in a direction, let it ride and see how this TIF eight restructure works out for two thousand and twenty. That would be my recommendation for the TIF five debt service for next year. It wasn't levied for last year either. We have the same issue for TIF six here. As you can see, right now, TIF six owes you a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. This is an estimate right now, because there is some increment in TIF six right now, just maybe not enough to cover the entire debt service, so we're looking at about thirty thousand dollars that general fund would need to cover, or three dollars per hundred thousand dollar value. So a pretty small amount. Same recommendation here, I think, let this ride and see what happens once we get the road in and see if we have any prospective buyers over in TIF six, and then we'll make a decision come two thousand and twenty what to do with this. But if you feel we should levy for this, let me know, and we can decide that either at next meeting or on November first. Again, RDA, we have an advance to RDA for sixty-four thousand dollars right now, and EMS advance of four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars right now. This is inflated right now. We do adjust this balance at year-end based on EMS cash balances. So this number will decrease, but I just want to throw everything out there. Total outstanding monies owed to the general fund from other funds is one point four million dollars, just to give you an idea of what's sitting out there. Okay, so some money we have to play with. Remaining special assessment funds available is a hundred and nineteen thousand, four hundred. You can make a decision tonight if you want. If you want me to use that all up and reduce our nineteen borrowing, we can. We can use it for contingency amounts for any projects next year. We can carry it forward to reduce two thousand and twenty borrowings. Again, just something to keep in mind, if anybody feels strongly about using those monies up, we certainly can. TIP three transfer amounts due to general fund, we have a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars left over. We can do whatever we want with that money. The special assessments, I would like to keep on the capital side of things, either go towards the debt service funding or go towards reducing the debt, the TIP three. We do have the ability to do whatever we want with that money, to be honest with you. And it's available, and there's plenty of cash flow in TIP three to use that money. So keep that in the back of your mind as we go through this. Again, it's a nice chunk of change, but it's not a sustainable source of revenue, so it doesn't answer all of our questions, but it is available. But like I said, just keep in mind, it's not a sustainable amount of revenue. All right, balanced budget.
Who's that?
I don't know, I found them online.
Are your dog James?
No, it's not. My dog wouldn't do that. Okay, continue review of general, on the twenty-fifth of November first, continue review of general fund department, stormwater budget, opera house budget, November first. We have a couple more fund departments, general fund departments to go through, library, RDA. We'll finalize the CIP and finalize the budget summary. I think that the general fund department and other fund budgets, we should be able to get through pretty quickly because we've touched on the real high-level items at this point, so. With that, should we take a little break, keep going? What do you folks want to do? Anybody want to take a break?
Pat already did.
Yeah, cheer.
Take a five-minute break. We'll get you out here. Oh, I thought you were Holly, sorry. Holly's birthday.
Yeah, what she wanted to do was...
This cost actually looks pretty reasonable in terms of an increase for legal costs. So any questions on the legal costs?
Is that all, Jim?
Yeah, yep.
Thank you. Is that just the city attorney or is that other, just the city attorney cost?
No, that's not. That's city attorney as well as our employment attorney.
Okay, good, thank you.
Cost on both.
We anticipate, this last year, we had an extra cost this current year because of the chapter seventy-eight that we've been working on. Next year, we anticipate we'll be doing some things for zoning because of the Act sixty-seven or whatever we talked about, you know, for the conditional use permit. And what we're going to try to do is not reinvent the wheel because all municipalities are going to have to update the ordinances as well. So we're going to try to work with that. But we anticipate that, you know, there's still going to be a fair amount of legal work that'll need to be done.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next one we'll go through is the HR and risk management department itself. Pretty straightforward budget. You can see here, again, when I point out something, all these lines go in alphabetical order so you can kind of follow where they're going. So first line here is ads and publications. You can see the jump of $8,500. The reason for that is the number of the publications and ads are moving to HR, to the HR and risk management department and moving out of other departments. So that's why we see the increase. And then you see a corresponding jump in operating expenses too, which would kind of relate to that. And some of that also has to do with, if you go down to training, you can see we have an increase for BSNA training that's scheduled for 2019. If we look at where we're at in terms of salaries, which is this line over here, this 2704. If we jump over...
Explain what BSNA training...
Oh, sorry. That's our ERP system. So that's general ledger payroll accounts payable.
Software.
Human resources.
Yeah.
The software that we use.
Okay. I think it's a really robust ERP system, honestly. So we just need some training on it. I don't think we're utilizing it to its full potential right now.
Yeah, we're going to be able to, you know, get better reporting for the committees. That's something we've been talking about at CACP. Is Jamin gets more familiar with it and gets Ryan up to speed on it. And then, right now, we're using two different payroll systems. One for the city, the BSNA, and then I don't know what utilities uses.
Microsoft Dynamics.
So I'm not really sure. We'll probably continue to do that for...
We think we'll probably continue to do that just because of the type of reporting that needs to occur. And Jamin and I have talked about that. So that is not something that's on our radar right now. But being able to better utilize the employee self-service and several of the functionalities throughout the system will help on the HR side. I know you have things that you're going to do on the APAR, financial sides, so...
Yeah, and they have a long-term budgeting tool too that I'm setting up specific training on too, to look and see how that works and maybe start doing like five-year lookouts and everything. That'll help a little bit. As opposed to me throwing all this information at you. We can maybe get it a little more organized for you.
Yeah, the point that he made about shifting some of the things to HR, you're going to find, one of the other things we're going to be working toward is the phones is one for probably what, next year? Or did you do some of that this year?
It'd be in 2020.
Some of the IT stuff, we want to get into the IT's budget instead of having it in everybody's budget. Just give it all to IT because they're the ones that really are going to manage that at the end of the day. So you're going to see a lot of addition. And I think will be improvements that'll better serve everybody and save a lot of staff time. And we want to create efficiencies because if we're not going to be able to hire additional staff, we need to continue to work toward being more efficient.
So overall, if you look at where we're at on salaries, 3% wages, 3%, pretty straightforward. Total jump of $15,673. Again, most of that's explained by the ads and publications and then the salaries and wages increases. So any questions on that one? Okay, so the next one for AJ is the general government one. Again, this one is kind of a catch-all really. So if we look at where this is at, you can see there's not much of a variance here. I just shifted the way some things were categorized. So the very bottom number there for 19 to $53,000, what that relates to is the cost for the WR payoff that the utilities advanced to the city. So that's where that cost goes every single year. And then the $70,000 up above is to cover any change in health insurance tiers, some overrun in self-insured dental amounts, miscellaneous items. And then there's a chunk built into this amount as well too for an outstanding lawsuit that we have out there right now. I think that amount is, what, $25,000?
$25,000 SIR.
So the remainder would be to cover any overruns in health insurance and things like that. So any questions on general government? Okay. Now, may I have our insurance costs? This one's pretty straightforward too. You can see, we don't need to look at this line by line. I think bottom line kind of paints the correct picture here. So you can see 2019 increase over the 18 budget is about $13,371 or 5%. You can see my notes at the bottom. We've basically been running a 5% to 6% increase every single year over the past few years. So the first three columns are 15, 16, and 17 actual. And you can see those costs have been steadily increasing over the years, so...
Which is market.
Yep, which is, yeah, based on market.
Market.
Any questions on insurance?
We have one over here.
Yes, Tim.
Thanks. Yeah, actually, I'm just curious, how many employees do we have? I don't even know that. I'm embarrassed to say.
We currently have about 125 employees full-time. And then, including all of our LTEs and summer help, we go up to around 200 to 25.
Thank you.
Okay, so that's it for AJ. Any questions for her before she leaves? Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Next up is law enforcement.
Thank you, AJ.
Okay, so we'll just kind of go through the line here. You can see employee benefits are jumping to $15,676 or approximately 5%. Again, that's all based on, that's basically going to follow the wage changes within the police department. The next line item down, the health insurance, that's the change of $3,904. You can see, it looks a little weird because it's only a 1% change, but I looked at them. 27 employees with insurance right now. 15 of those have single, self-inspouse or self plus children, which with the new tiers, that's why we're not seeing an overall 6% increase for them because just less costs are being shifted to the police department this year for health and dental insurance costs this year. The next item we're going to touch on is overtime. That's the change of $39,000. We kind of touched on that earlier tonight, so I think we're good there. Some things to look at for next year in terms of overtime. The next big shift down is the wages, the $74,000 change or 5%. Again, it's not the straight 3% because some, certain employees do have some step increases built in that had been predetermined or agreed to. Some shifts in hours and things like that. So it's not the full 3%. With this number of employees, I don't think you're ever going to get the exact 3% because of individual agreements that are established out there as well. The community service officer, we kind of touched on. Those are the two line items, the $2,356 and $7,068 dollar change. Not a big change, but again, with the increase, we increased those hours. Again, what comes with that is the increased revenue that that individual is bringing in. Wages dispatch, you can see they changed about 1%. Again, we hired Mary Lincoln's replacement at $3 less per hour. So overall, we're seeing a jump of $155,000 or 5% over the 18 budget. If you look at the changes, again, it has to do with wages, salaries, and then the overtime. And we kind of really touched on most of this in the earlier part of this presentation. So any specific questions on law enforcement right now?
One for the chief, if I may. Greg, have you had any feedback from downtown merchants and/or landlords on parking enforcement?
Some. Actually, nothing really from the merchants. You know, once in a while, we'll get a, you know, a card that somebody leaves to the dispatcher saying that this is ridiculous, that, you know, why do we have two-hour parking downtown? Things like that. But it's very rare. Otherwise, there hasn't been much for complaints at all over the enforcement downtown. In fact, again, last week, I just got a request that they wanted more enforcement in the municipal lots because they're concerned about the long-term storage of vehicles in those lots and things like that. But, you know, very little feedback one way or the other. Some people say it's a great thing. Some people say it's not so much. And so it's not a lot of feedback.
The library has been pleased.
Library has definitely been pleased. They see a lot more parking available in their lot there. And again, you know, what we're seeing downtown is that a lot of the violations has been by employees, not necessarily customers of the businesses. And so I think that probably is why we don't get a ton of complaints over the parking enforcement.
Okay, any additional questions for the chief? Yes.
I have a question. What if the, it says the department requested? Does that include everything that wasn't going to be funded? I mean, I listed a bunch of things. You kind of briefly ran through it about things that the chief had requested. Where is that represented on this spreadsheet?
What this is, is me not knowing the budgeting software. So I just worked through this one column, not realizing there was a whole finance department approved and mayor adjusted budget. So what this is, is we changed the process a little bit where a lot of the costs came to me in terms of just like actual cash expenditures, just normal operating expenditures, not salaries, wages, benefits, things like that. And then what I did is I met with each of the department heads and walked through pretty much every single cost, walked through every single employee with them in terms of hours, wages, requests, things like that. And ultimately, what is in this column is what we agreed to is going to go in the budget right now. So it doesn't mean it's everything they requested. What this column means is just, this is what we worked out to. Next year, what you'll see, now that I know how the budget software works, is you'll see a department requested, finance department, and then mayor's final budget. So the next line item you'll see when we get to the November 13th budget would be the mayor's proposed budget, which would take into consideration any changes we make during these meetings. And then we'll have that last item. What we're missing is the beginning request and then any changes that we made through those meetings. So it's just, it's kind of my mistake, really.
Oh, I know. It was just a pet peeve, actually, of the mayor from last year that it wasn't, it never got shown on all those reports. And it was a big concern with the council at that time that we never knew what the true recrus were for each department. And I know you're new and you didn't know that, but it's really, I was hoping this year that we'd actually...
Well, we did have the additional staffing requests separate to this. We just didn't include it into this because we knew we weren't going to be able to fund them anyway.
And I can tell you...
But we encouraged them to submit them requests. And we actually, AJ created the form to do that. Where in the past, that was my biggest beef is, you know, we need to know what the needs are. And the council needs to know what, and the community needs to know what the needs are. And I think, I thought we captured that in the previous slide where we had all the requests in there. We can certainly put it in here as well.
Yeah, it would just be nice to have like that side-by-side. This is what was requested. This is what we can actually afford. So, you know...
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah, I don't know how big of a deal it would be for Jamin to actually do that, but it would be nicer, you know, the community and us as council can see, wow, we're really, you know, that side-by-side.
We did do them separate, and you just have to add the two together, which we could certainly do.
Yeah, because the requests, you know, minus the fire department requests, came to almost $200,000, you know. So we don't have that kind of money, so...
Would you also want the rightsizing request in there as well?
Well, I mean, that's...
Is that part of it too?
Well, I mean, what each, yeah. I mean, I guess for each department, it would be nice what they actually need or want and what we can actually afford.
Okay.
I mean, we had talked about this last year when we didn't know, it was hidden what each department wanted. Now, it's there, but you have to kind of dig and create your own side-by-side comparison.
The mayor had us fill out the form that he was talking about for each and every department and what positions they were requesting. So we have those requests along with the justification, along with the costing for each of those positions.
And they're in this package.
So we can, by all means, review that, but they should have that information.
Yep, I can easily add that part of it. I think even for 19 and show it, you know, hand it out to you folks. The rightsizing would be a pretty...
Well, don't have to do the rightsizing, but like when you have the mayor's report
Yep, I can do that.
On that final thing.
Yep.
What the department, should be three columns, what each department requested and what the mayor has said is what we can afford.
Yep, and the only place you're going to see is wages, well, wages, employee benefits, those types of items, everything else that's in the individual departments and funds budgets. We sat down and walked through line by line. And I didn't change anything. I sent them questions and said, this looks weird. Are you sure it's right? And then we worked through those questions together.
Oh, that's fantastic.
But I can do that for, with the November 13 final budget.
Yeah, that's fine. I would just like to see the side-by-side so people know where we are when they say that, you know, where we're spending money and what we actually need. It'd be nice to know.
Okay, we can do that.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions for law enforcement? Okay, up next would be fire, I believe. We touched on a couple of Scott's staffing requests. But we'll just go through his budget in general here. The first line item that jumps out here is the employee benefits cost. You can see we're seeing an increase of $10,263. Again, this shouldn't be a surprise. We're just budgeting a little bit closer to what actual historical amounts have been and based on what his actual staffing levels are right now or propose to be. So you can see 15, we were at $36,000, and then up to almost $37,000. We were at $40,000 in 2017. For some reason, we jumped that budget back down in 18. Didn't make a lot of sense to me. So that's the big jump there. The next one we'll touch on, if you go on to salaries, you can see the 3% there across the board. Wages part-time, again, 3%. And then the wages for the volunteers, which is the very last line item, the $91,000 change. Again, we staffed that at full volunteer staffing. What do you have right now, 36?
Current roster of 35 and a full roster of 42. And then this is the year that they actually will receive that 10% increase that they haven't seen in the last 10 or 11 years.
That'll be approved last year.
You approved last year for this year, so that will carry forward. So that's why you see a little jump.
Excellent.
Okay, so I have a question. The salaries, is the salary your salary then, Scott? And then the wage line, who...
I have a fire technician and a deputy fire marshal.
Okay, so those two people...
There's two and three-quarters of us that work at the fire station.
Okay.
Really, the challenge has been to find volunteers right now. And with the tight labor market and it's been difficult. I don't know if it's been as difficult with EMS, but I know for fire, it's been really challenging.
The hard thing is actually finding employers that will release. We have fires pretty much around the clock. Daytime is a real concern.
Yeah, and when I meet with employers, that's one thing I always talk about. So far, it really hasn't created any leads, but I'm not going to get discouraged as I'm out there. You know, because it's their business that we're trying to help protect and their employees. So if they can give back, you know, we certainly encourage that.
Okay, any other specific questions for the fire protection budget? Okay, last one for the evening would be EMS.
Thank you, Scott.
So the EMS budget is obviously a little bit different than the...
Cancelled them.
Okay. Than the ones we just ran through. They have their own revenues and their own expenditures. Lisa and I sat down with the mayor and worked through this pretty closely. If we start going down the revenues again, we're probably a little bit conservative on the actual ambulance fees right now. But again, that's, we don't want to get too aggressive with that piece of it. The EMS department fees, again, you can see they're jumping up about $2,139. That's per contract. I think that's being renewed next year, 2020?
Yeah.
So for 2020, we'll redo that contract. The State Department collection, SDC, this is kind of a change in accounting practice, actually. So you can see where we're requesting the $25,000 in revenue. It's just a change in accounting that we worked through with Baker-Tilly this last year. So we'll start seeing some revenue there. And then the transfer in from general fund, which is the very last line, you can see hasn't changed over the past few years. So any questions on EMS revenues?
Yeah, I guess my question is, do we have a plan in place to try and reduce the amount of transfer in?
Well, I imagine some of that will come through the contract negotiations that Lisa will go through. I think over the past few years since Lisa took over, I mean, you can see where the revenue's been going. So the effort is there. I know they're jumping up their collection now. I know they're jumping up their collection efforts. So, I don't know if that's ultimately your goal, but I think you've been doing a great job, so...
When our debt service retires, from when that building was remodeled eight and a half years ago, that will help substantially. That will be a savings of about $140,000 a year. So, we're just waiting to get that debt service payment off our books.
And when will that come off your books?
2020, I believe. I think we have two years left.
Okay. And so, at that time, do you think that we can be looking at reducing the transfer in?
I certainly hope so. But likewise, I just want everyone to remember that we are a volunteer-based service, and at some point in time, I know I'm going to sit here, and I'm going to tell you that we can no longer sustain ourselves as a volunteer-based service. We are running the same call volume as Fitch-Rona, which is Fitchburg and Verona.
Yeah.
It's amazing what our people are doing right now. So, I just want you to keep that in the back of your heads, even though in two years, things are going to look much better on paper. I just want to prepare everyone.
Well, I guess what I think we should be seeing, then, is some type of a plan, not maybe this year, but next year, to start to anticipate some of that.
And it's hard, you know, volunteerism is a hard thing to estimate. We went for a year and a half without having any viable, long-sustaining new members, and this last year, at the end of last year, we got six who are very active. So, it ebbs and it flows, and if those people stay active for 10 years, I might not have to say anything for 10 years. So, it's a difficult thing to anticipate.
Do you anticipate having to do any more work to the building?
No. The building will meet our needs for many years to come. Well, there's a caveat there. We did speak of this. One of the issues that I'm running into is that as us as volunteers are getting a little older, and we're not moving quite as fast as we used to, many of us used to respond from our homes. We have five minutes to get that ambulance on the road from the time we're notified. I live on Highland Drive. It takes me four minutes and 30 seconds to get to the station. I can't jump out of bed in 20 seconds anymore and get out my front door. So, several of us that are getting a little older are now staying at the station for our shifts. It's just easier. Well, we have a roster of one-third of our members don't live in that five-minute response time. So, now we have them staying at the station, and we have some of us staying at the station, and we only have three, we have four bedrooms.
I have to get a question. How long is your shift?
It depends. You're volunteers, so as long as you make your mandatory 90-hour minimum every three months, your shift can be as short or as long as you want it to be. We're running into some lodging issues.
Bunk beds?
That we made. We thought we'd made progress when we moved away from bunk beds eight years ago. So, I spoke with Rodney Sheal, and he made some phone calls to the engineers and said, you know, what can we do? What are our options? They're very limited at that building, because you can't have any overnight lodging without an exterior window. So, I don't know. We talked briefly about the bank, and would there be an option there? I don't know. I don't know. It's not a pressing issue, but we might need to get creative here.
There's a cell that will have a new toilet in this building.
Used very infrequently, so...
Just kidding.
I can't imagine it's going to add up to $1.2 million-ish, though, which is what the last debt services cost them, so... Okay. Any other questions on the revenue side? So, we'll just go quickly down the expense side. Obviously, the first line item that jumps up out here is the $25,000 decrease in interest costs. If you go down about 10, 12 line items, you see a big number jump out, that's $30,000 increase. It's just a difference in how me and Tammy are budgeting the debt service. I'm budgeting actual interest and actual principal payments. She, I don't know. I don't know where the numbers came from for last year, but ultimately, the net change is not that much. So, those are two big items that jump out, is $25,000 and 30, but it's just a change in budgeting. The next item is this $8,000 here for outside services. Again, this is due to the increased collection efforts that Lisa and her team have taken on. It's an outside service contract, but they've been trying to get some of these bills paid. The next item that jumps out here is the $10,000 change, which is the transfer to EMS truck fund. Again, this is to basically prepare for the increased costs that ambulances actually cost now, which we're seeing with all vehicle costs, and we're just trying to be a little bit proactive in getting the actual EMS truck fund funded for the next ambulance purchase. So, we notched that up a little bit this year. And then the next line item, again, is $8,000 increase in wages. Again, I think we're shooting towards budgeting for full staffing. We've seen increased recruitment efforts on the EMS side, so I think we may actually get pretty close to this, which is why we continue to budget at this level as well.
Yeah. When we get new people that are going through training, we actually run with a crew of four instead of three, and their training can take anywhere from, like, two months to six, seven, eight months of actually riding on the ambulance. So, now we're paying four people a stipend of $15, you know, $15 for a new person per call. So, there's that extra expense in there.
Okay.
Are we going to bring on six new people?
That's right.
And so, how many calls do you get in a year?
This year, I'm estimating about 1,650.
And Fitch-Rona gets...
Well, I have to go look, but I was just at a meeting, and people were over there talking to the chief over there, and they said, well, what are you up to, about five a day? I was like, yeah, it's all right. And I'm like, yep, me too. Wow. That's our average.
Have you seen an increase with the new senior facilities in the last few years?
No. Nope. I will be very honest, though, and I reported this to council when you asked about two, five, and 10-year plans, that I am nervous about the new, what is it, 100 apartment, 20 acute care establishment that's going into Kettle Park West. When you get numbers that high in population, we're going to be there a lot, and that's concerning.
Yeah.
That's, you're talking to another scoll and another Nazareth in our community. So, thinking about that and how we're going to absorb the extra runs over there.
So, with what Lisa suggested, do you have, like, a plan going forward of how many, do you need more vehicles? Do you need more, you know, paid staff if that happens?
I do not need any more paid staff right now.
But even with that increase?
It's going to depend on our volunteerism and our, we don't need any more ambulances. We have two that are used quite frequently, one that's, we call it a reserve ambulance when one goes down. We don't have to worry about taking anything out of service. We can still maintain the level of service that we always have. That would be the third ambulance that we have. Again, it's going to very mu, we have such a dedicated group right now, the level of energy that is down there right now is impressive. I would be more concerned if I knew that I was working with a lot of people on burnout or ready to retire. We're just not there quite yet. And I'll get, when I start to see some of those signs, like, we really need to start thinking about paid personnel the next budget cycle or the one after that, I'm going to be serious about it, because I'm being serious and honest with you right now.
Are there private services that can, I don't know, focus on, or I don't want to call them problematic, but the larger housing developments?
They already do. They already, so for people who are bed-bound and need to go to their appointments, need to go to Madison for any kind of testing, those are all contracted. Scoll and NAS use Ryan Brothers, Curtis, things like that. So, our calls are all acute in nature, where the patient needs to go right now for something that's happening, a possible stroke, a possible heart attack.
So, they don't deal with those types of...
No, no, because they're coming, driving from Madison, sometimes from Milwaukee, anticipated, you know, scheduled. I'm going to be there to pick John Smith up at 8 o'clock in the morning. I know that that's my first stop.
Can I ask you a question? Just a curiosity. Do all your calls go to Stoughton Hospital?
No.
Okay.
Nope. And I've, just kind of a curious note, many of you may have, if you watch TV, noticed that Unity Point Courts has done a huge advertising campaign over this last year, and I'm seeing an increase in the amount of transports that we're having to take to UW, because, I believe it's just because of their advertising campaign and how many people are picking up their insurance when they have options, which unfortunately takes us out of our community for about two hours, hour and a half, two hours. So, that's not making me very happy, but we've got to go where people want to be taken.
Isn't that who our CUD has for insurance carrier?
Yes. Yep, so it's either Merritt or UW. Those are our two hospital choices, if you don't want to get dinged by our insurance.
Thank you very much for what you do.
Sure. Oh, you're welcome. We love it.
Okay. Any other questions on EMS?
Uh-uh.
Okay. We are at the end of this agenda. I'll pull up, what do we have next week? Next week. So, on the 25th, we'll be going through IT, planning, stormwater, public works, senior center, clerk, and finance, and opera house. Seems like a lot, but we'll kind of go through them at the same pace as this unless there's any specific questions. Most of them are pretty straightforward. And then the November 1st one would be recreation, library, RDA, the mayor's budget, those will go pretty quickly. Circle back around to the CIP and make sure everybody's good with that, and then we'll move on to the November 13 approval if there's no major changes, so...
Six o'clock. Is everyone here going to be at the next meeting?
Yes, sir. There's cookies.
Holly was getting nervous, because we anticipated Phil was going to be here, but he was sick. So, we wanted to make sure we had our numbers, and then Sid had to leave early. So, thanks for everyone that made it tonight. If you have a conflict, just let us know, so we can try to figure out what our options are.
The next one, again, is the November 13?
Yeah, next week.
Next Thursday.
Thursday?
Next Thursday.
Number 30 is the final.
So, we're doing the 25th and November 1st.
As it's not Halloween, because Halloween is sick, so...
I like the presentation.
Yeah, good. I know it's overwhelming on paper, but it's...
Motion.
I'd like to move to the jury.
Second?
All in favor? Hi.
I've got a way to save money. We can take the air conditioning down.